There you go, sweet.
Alright, here we go. So we are called to order. Open form plus approval of minutes? Everybody get a look at the minutes?
I do.
I, they look fine to me. I approve the minutes. If anybody wants a second, I'm.
A second.
See no problems, right? I did not see any problems. Uh, next up, general discussion and open forum to anyone present to speak. Carl, you want to say something? Not your turn yet.
We'll wait until everybody asks questions.
Okay, then, it's coming up, I think. Old business, discussion of the River Road Athletic Complex Drainage Project. Now you're up.
Oh, okay, well, since the last time I think we had a meeting, Jimmy and Mike Tomato and myself, we met downstairs and we reviewed what needs to be done to get this thing out to bid. And what we're looking at basically at this point, since the plans are done, technical specs are done. We need to know where to advertise, how to advertise, and when to have, hold to certain dates. Particularly the pre-bid meeting, and then when bids are due, and then when it'll be reviewed by, I imagine the board of selection for approval.
Okay.
So that's what we're waiting on right now.
Where is it, is it, who is it up to to put it out to bid, to put it to these different venues?
I would think it would be up to Mike, because the, we discussed on, you know, where you might put it out to bid, and then one of them obviously is the DAS website at the state level. And Jimmy's indicated that Krab also has a methodology for going out to bid, which Mike is apparently aware of not. So we have two spots where we can go to post the bids with PDF files. And if we need to, I'm not sure how, or if it's required to go to put it into a newspaper. If it is, we can put in a short notice that says, go to this.
Oh, right.
You know, spot to find all the detailed information.
Okay.
So we're awaiting word from somebody at this point.
And Mike, Mike told us that we can also, instead of having to print out the sixty some odd page document, we could set up a page on the website that has the PDFs, questions, stuff like that.
So that's kind of to your point, if it's up in the paper, it says, go to the town website for the PDFs?
Yes. And then the thing is that they're already in PDF format. And if we have any changes or we want to put in actual dates, any advertisement for bids, we can do that and make another PDF file. We're all, we're all set to post.
Okay.
We just need to get the information from somebody.
Is that Mike, or is that us?
Combination. I'll, I'll check in with him and see what he needs to do on his part, and then whatever else I'll handle.
Carl does this all the time, so whatever you think is right.
Yeah, there was one other thing too, the wage rates. Either you or Mike was going to check with.
So I think we are, we, we are, so talking with finance, we are going to do prevailing wage.
We are?
Yeah.
Okay, so they have to be within, they, I'll have to check again, but typically they used to be required to put in within ten days of the bidding date, so that it wouldn't be old or, you know, irrelevant. And so we want to save that for when we know the dates that we're going to go out for. And then we can ask for the wage rates.
Based on talking with Mike and finance, it seemed like we could try to go and get not doing prevailing wage by saying it's a new, Carl, was it a new project is under a million and existing under a hundred thousand?
Yes.
So it'd be.
So a hundred thousand is the, the limit for amplification or repair. And typically that goes for buildings more so than anything else. In this case, I'm not sure how they would interpret, but typically they will interpret to go to wage rates, no matter what.
Yeah.
And, but for a brand new project, brand new, it would be one million dollars.
And so talking with people, it seemed like the best way to do it was rather have something come around and bite us in the tail from the state, it would be due prevailing wage. And then, Stu, I gave everybody a quick update on, on our discussions about pickleball.
So let's hold off on that.
Yeah.
Let's not talk about it.
Yeah. So we can talk about that later date.
And look at this, we've got everybody except for Steve Swart. It's amazing.
Okay, so what I'll have to do with respect to the pickleball is take it out of the specifications.
Just for now.
And out of the bid form, because I had included it in.
Correct. Thanks for doing all this, Carl.
Not a problem.
You're a good guy. Contrary to popular belief, you're a good man. I'm kidding. You know that.
I think that's everything for.
And Mike's going to set all that website stuff up, put all the PDFs where it's accessible.
It should be, it should be a quick.
You've never had to do any of that. We've never had a director set up dating for anything.
No, I don't think we have. It's always been the town, somebody in the town. I'm assuming it's. I, I think it's just a simple addition to our website, and I can upload the PDF that way. And then he, he can probably help me out if I have questions for it. I think it's just adding a section to the Parks and Rec, I don't know if Parks and Rec or Parks and Rec Commission section of the website.
That's true. That'd be a perfect spot to put it.
Director's report?
It's the director. Carl, thanks again for everything that you are doing for us. I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Talk about, yeah, okay, and then get something posted on the website?
Yep, and then paper, if needed, I'll check in and see if that's still a requirement for getting in the papers, but.
What's the, what's the normal parameter for putting it out to bid and expecting a bid?
Uh, probably three weeks. You should give, give everybody three weeks. And the, the pre-bid meeting should be about two thirds of the way through after the second week. Because in the bid documents, we have that, a five day limit on getting comments back. So we want to give them enough time, but we'll talk about the dates, you know, so that if they have questions after the pre-bid meeting, you want to give them enough time. And sometimes we extend the bid date by one week because we have a bunch of questions that need to be answered. So that, that can be extended. We'll, we do an identity, basically.
Gotcha. The pre-bid meeting is going to be basically all the interested contractors?
Correct. And then the only thing we have to decide in, in terms of the pre-bid is, do we make it mandatory, or do we leave it up to everybody to take a look on their own? We can have it and say it's mandatory or non-mandatory.
Well, they're, they're going to be basing their bids off of sheets or whatever.
Right.
So they take, they run the risk if they don't come and ask questions.
Correct.
That's fair.
Sometimes if it's uncomplicated, you, you don't even need a pre-bid meeting. But this one has a lot of little things to it.
You, I mean, you drew this up. Do you think this is complicated or uncomplicated?
Somewhere in between, details. Exactly. Because it's, it's got to be finessed. This field has to be graded to a real fine tune here. That's the whole essence of this thing. And then we have the, the under grains going around the edge, and that has to be well done.
We also might want to bring up pickleball at that point, too.
We can talk to them about it.
Yeah. In the back of your head, it possibly.
That it could happen.
Without making any serious commitments at that point.
Right. Sweeten the pot, sort of. Yeah, or at least give them a feeling for what's going on there besides, and maybe they want to be part of that. That, that maybe does sweeten the pot for them. I agree. Okay. What else, fellas? Is that good for River Road? Do you have any other comments?
Uh, no, I mean, it's, we're, I think we're pretty much set. We've looked at the plans, we've looked at the specs, you've taken a look at the specs. So we're kind of ready to go. We just need to get it up there.
All right, and you're going to talk to Mike in the next couple of days? Cool.
And I will modify the, the bid documents, include the wage rates. There are some things we need to put into the general conditions, then another section for where the wage rates go. And, and again, we want to wait on getting those because there's a ten day limit or window in which they have to be bid. Oftentimes, we've gotten the wage rates late because of the Labor Department, and then we have to extend the, the bid data.
Do they change those a lot?
The wage rates?
Yeah.
Not necessarily. It, I've not seen it change any great extent.
She don't want to be caught in the middle of one.
No, no, it's, yeah.
All right, if you think we're done with River Road, we can talk about new business. Do we have any new business? Give us a synopsis of your director's report, young man.
All right. So met with the Ashford Parks and Rec Director to go over high school basketball. We will be getting a check for two thousand ninety-four dollars for the revenue and our portion of expenses. So that's right around where it's been in the past years, so it's, it's still going strong, I'd say.
That's good.
We had our first pavilion rental for the season scheduled for May fourth. I'm going to get a webpage hooked up to the website, just saying what dates are open, what days are reserved, just so people, if they are looking to reserve the pavilion or the fields, they'll know if their day's free or not.
Do they tell us what those are for? It doesn't matter, I guess.
The pavilion.
Do we ever ask?
What are you, what are you having down there? Are you having a?
Birthday party. I don't know if we have, if it's on the form.
I, I, I'd have to check the form, but I think there's a portion for the reason. This one, it's a, it's a kid's birthday party, so.
That's cool.
You don't want to have a dirt bike rally down there in the moon.
That would be messy.
Spring break.
They cracked out on that this year.
Oh, yeah.
Sure ruins everything. All right, keep going, young man.
So this past week, I started working to clear out the Little League shed at River Road. I have a good group of parents who are going to help me get the field going. There is a practice going tonight over at River Road. I believe it's the minors' section of Mansfield, Ashford, Wellington, Little League. Honestly, the, the outfield's in really good shape. The infield, I think I'm going to concoct the vinegar dish soap spray to try and get the weeds out.
Oh, yeah?
Instead of spraying ground up all over the place. And then at that point, the, I mean, the dirt, it's, it could be turned over, but we're going to be raking it. I have a volunteer coming out from EO Smith who needs some community service hours. Him and I are going to rake tomorrow afternoon. And the season starts in two or three weeks, the first games are happening. And I think by then, the, the field will be in really, really good shape.
Do you still have that machine to clean out the base pads?
I don't know. Is it a big one, or?
I thought it was like a walk behind thing. It's in this shed.
Oh, the tractor?
It's not a tractor. Is it like a three wheeler or? I thought we did.
I'm sure it's either, I found a couple of machines in that shed over there, but one of them was for the lime.
Yeah.
Another was the spray.
It would be in this shed.
It would be motorized.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll look in there again.
It's like a heavy piece of equipment that turns the dirt. Have you spoken with the kids at Mo's Lawns?
The, Roy, yeah, yeah. I knew about the tractor, like the ride along tractor.
Yeah, maybe that's it then. Tony knows about it.
Tony Aldridge. Oh, I haven't, we're all.
I think we, I think we're, we're having a discussion with him about a machine for that over here, so you might be able to use it. Yeah, I thought it ended up here, and everybody's still using it.
You can throw in the trunk of your car. Probably pretty big.
Oh, so it's not the tractor that? No, he's kidding. It's something you put on a trailer.
It's big. You're going to need a trailer.
Is, okay. Maybe Troy could get it moved for you?
Yeah. I'll, I'll see. I, I, I need to clear up some more space in that shed before. There's still, there's two grills in there, which I was going to ask about if anybody knew about the grills, who they belong to.
It probably got donated. Yeah, probably belonged to you at this point. They probably don't work at this point.
There's some, there's like a nice turf patch. I don't know. It's for the batting cage. I'm going to roll that out and see. It's like all rolled up. I'm going to look into that, but I got most of it cleared out. There's some odds and ends that are still in the middle, but I'm working on that this week.
I think if you can figure out that machine is there, that would save you from spraying stuff on the base pads, and you can make a nice cleanup of the base pads.
Nice.
And if Troy should be able to move it, if he can't, I got a trailer calling.
Yeah, okay, awesome. What else do we have going on? I did look into the scoreboard for the town field. I'm waiting to get official quotes back from the companies, but it seems like the cheapest is around four grand. There's some other options up to eight grand, but it tells you if it's a hit or an error, or, you know, different odds and ends that I don't think need.
It's not making me a sandwich. You're just looking for the one that's at River Road.
Yeah, I think that's going to be the go-to. I mean, if we get a good, if, if the other quotes come back and it's a good deal, then I'll, I'll bring it to us. But for now, I think, for what we're looking for, I think the one that we have at River Road, it'll, it'll do the job.
Okay.
We have a date for Wellington Day set, May twenty-fifth. I'm working with Melissa and Karen from Human Services on that. We're going to have a commission meeting soon. I don't know if the rest of the commission has been selected, but I know I'm on it, so I'll be there.
Lucky guy.
I thought you thought we were the chairman. What was that? That's like the tricentennial. We did have our first meeting of that, and that went really well. We had some good ideas.
When is the tricentennial? Is it two years?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Okay. Oh, you got the words.
Yeah, so I think we decided on quarterly meetings until next year, and then we'll probably pick it up, pick it up from there. So my big news is about April vacation camp. So this is really exciting. So Phil was able to offer us in Human Services some grant money to cover the cost of April camp. So we were able to cut the cost in half from two hundred dollars to one hundred dollars. And we're now able to offer bus transportation to and from camp, where, which is, you know, great for families who get home late, whatever the case is.
So like school buses? You're going to pick up kids at their houses and bring them to camp?
Yep.
Wow. So the, so the grant money, the grant money, it, it only, it only covers half because now you're including the bus.
Yes. And then we're including, uh, an outside, it's kind of like STEM program to come in for three hours on that Friday, which I think it came out to like forty dollars a kid, and that's also worked into the, what the grants.
What is that STEM going to get, teach?
It's, so our theme is Animal Week, so it's called Challenge Island, and each island is a different thing. So they'll create, you know, a little animal on a plate type thing. Karen Cote and I, we're going to be meeting the woman who runs it to get more info soon, but we got good reviews on it, and it's, the kids, the kids will enjoy it.
Five days?
Only on that Friday, so three hours on that Friday.
So it's just one day?
Yep, and then we have, the Humane Society is going to come out on Monday to teach the kids about animals, how to treat animals, how to recognize the signs of an angry animal. And then we reached out to Jen Miller, who's animal control in town, to see if she wants to come speak to the kids, too. I tried to get some opossums to come from a possum rehabilitation program, but they were booked up for that week. I forget their names, but one of them had one eye and the other got hit by a car, so they, they take care of them, and they go out to schools and show kids that the opossums aren't scary. So we're hoping for a summer camp for the opossums.
Opossums are scary. I don't believe that.
And the other update on that, we're holding the camp at Hall School now, instead of the library, just because we're projecting. Well, our max is forty signups. I think we have ten or so right now.
Wow.
So we're, we don't want to bird in the library too much with all the kids running around in the quiet space.
Are you feeding them lunch, too?
No, we don't wash occasionally, but.
But it's, they're going to come Monday to Friday?
The kids, yep.
What's the hours?
Drop off eight forty-five and then pick up two forty-five unless aftercare, which is an additional fifty dollars.
Well, you're not feeding them, but they're going to be angry.
Snack. I mean, I, I did for summer camp, I did popsicles and stuff.
Grabbing some popsicles.
EYOS.
Do the kids bring sandwiches?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that like a coordinated, from that eight to two, is that like a coordinated, you got things set every?
Yes.
So there's no, no downtime?
Yes, generally we do stations, and the kids, the first couple of hours, they'll work around the stations, and then a break for lunch. And then after that, we either have the guests come in, or we'll do a movie, some type of movie time or free play.
So they are eating, but they have to bring your own.
Yeah, yeah. So we're starting yoga back up at the library. I think we're going to offer a promotional, a promotion where the first session will be free, so people can come out, give it a try, and then after that, ten dollars for drop-in. So I'm excited about that. And then our yoga instructor is on board for yoga in the park, starting concurrently with the concert series. So she'll be coming out to River Road and holding yoga from five to six-ish, and then that'll lead right into the concerts at six thirty.
So every concert before?
Yep, before every concert, yeah. She's all on board for that. She's super excited, so it'll be good to get some more people, and hopefully they'll want to stay for the concert, just to increase the, you know, the amount of people who come out for that.
That's the same lady, both yoga programs?
Yep, yep. And so just a trip update, unfortunately, the St. Patrick's Day trip had to get canceled. The bus company who we were running it through, he didn't get enough signups. We actually, the towns got more signups than him, so unfortunately he had to cancel. But we have four tickets sold for James Taylor so far. I wanted to get your guys' feedback. I'm thinking about buying two tickets from the department and then raffling them off. I wanted to get everybody's feedback, see if that, do you think that would make some money, if it's a good idea, if that's been done before?
You can raffle off.
Two tickets to the James Taylor trip. I'm thinking five or ten bucks a pop. They cost ninety-five.
Yeah? They cost us ninety-five?
Ninety-five each, yeah. That would be how much to buy, and then charging five, ten dollars to, for people to round bid.
But you're going to create a raffle, and what if it's two tickets to James Taylor, it's five bucks a ticket?
Yeah.
And where would you sell the raffle tickets?
Little League, I'd go out there for the Little League. If soccer's out there, I'd, I'd post up out there. And then just put it up on the website, on Facebook, and try and get people that way.
Sell twenty of them, that's a ticket. When's the, when is the concert?
Once, oh, July fourth. So I was hoping, yeah. I was hoping a little earlier, Chris, Chris and I, we talked about it last week, to see if that'd be a good idea. I think it might be a little too soon, but.
This includes the bus?
Yeah, bussin' and lawn seats. Which it's a solid deal, because the actual seats at Tanglewood, they're going for.
Five hundred bucks or something.
But I, Chris, my assistant, Chris checked a thousand for an actual seat over there.
You have to sell a certain number?
So we're allocated ten, and from what the Ashford Park and Rec Director said, she's, we sell out every, every year, so.
But our town gets ten at least.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the raffle will be fine. It's for one ticket, to win one ticket or to win a pair?
I was thinking a pair.
Oh, then you gotta, yeah, then you gotta sell more than
Yeah.
That twenty, you gotta sell forty. Yeah, why not?
So I'll run that through Ashford, see what she thinks, and go through that. We do have some money in the budget for fundraising. That's where I'd probably do it from, buy the ticket to fundraise for us.
Okay.
I'll keep everybody updated on that, though.
Post it on your site, post it in that backpack thing?
Yeah, I think we'd be good. So going back to Little League, I kind of already told these guys, but so Mansfield-Ashford, they're in a new league this year. They're playing Stafford, Rockville, Vernon, Ellington. And so that kind of makes us the middle point. So from talking with Mansfield-Ashford Director, he's expecting games on the weekend and at least two practices a week, probably more. So it's, it's nice that the, the field's going to get a lot of action this year. And I, I do have at least three parents who are willing to come out. One of them said today, you know, let me know a Saturday. I'll be out here all day and devote a day to getting, getting the field in shape. So a lot of progress on the, on the field front.
So we're still, we're still combining Mansfield and Ashford. We don't have a set. One can only.
Yes, yeah.
And, but they're going to use our fields?
Yep.
Because there will be a decent amount of people from Arlington?
Yeah, there's, the, one of the, the team that was practicing over there tonight, it's a Wellington dad, and I, I believe a majority Wellington kids.
He's the coach.
Yeah, Nick Basaka, he, he was my assistant coach for basketball, so we have a good relationship. He, he actually brought his own tarp out to the field this weekend with the rain and put it over the.
Wow, good guy.
Put it over the, the mound. So that's going to be my focus for at least this week, is I'm going to be out there hitting the shed and just raking, so.
How about the concession stand?
That, it's in good shape. That's where I found the, the controller box through the scoreboard up there.
Is somebody willing to do concessions during a Little League game?
I mentioned that to the president when I met with him. He said he'll get back to me on that. I'd probably have to get them a key, so I don't know the logistics of that, but we'll, we'll work on that.
PTA used to do that, I saw that. That wouldn't have, I mean, we're not looking for money or anything. He just wanted to use it, just to. I think it'd just be cool to have concessions, so people can have chips and sodas and stuff.
Yeah.
It also wouldn't hurt to get ten percent of the proceeds, but I think that's what we used to do.
Really?
I thought so.
I'll speak to him again, and I don't know, we'll need a contract for that, but.
Who did it during the music, during the concerts? That was PTA?
Human Services.
Human Services, yeah. PTA was doing it at some point for something, but.
They did it for the Halloween.
Okay.
They were there for Halloween, yeah.
Just, I mean, the concession stand is there. It's nice. People go to a ballgame, they expect something.
I, I, I told the president that if anybody hits the bocce court with a homerun, I'd be willing to pay for.
Free hot dog.
Free hot dog, free drink for the kid who get it. I think that's, I think that's it for me.
Hey Jimmy?
Yes?
Do you know how many Wellington children are involved?
This year, I don't have the numbers, but last year, we accounted for twenty-four percent of participants in the Mansfield-Ashford League, which came out, I think a hundred and three, I think, was the total number.
That's awesome.
That was last year's. I don't have this year's updated numbers, but twenty-four, we were twenty-four percent. Ashford was twenty-seven percent, and then Mansfield, whatever that.
Was a bad balance.
Forty, forty whatever percent, yeah.
Jimmy, they held tryouts already?
Yes, yep, those were two weekends ago, and that's where the parent got connected with the president, and he's on the board now. He's going to represent us at the board meeting, or at their board meetings. We haven't, we don't have a date set yet, but I'm meeting with the representatives from Mansfield-Ashford, Little League, and Wham! Soccer, along with the Parks and Rec Directors for each town. We're thinking mid, late April, I think. So I can, next meeting, I should have more info on that.
You know what would be nice? Occasionally, I would like to stop and watch a game, but you never know when they're going to be.
Occasionally, I would like to stop and watch a game, but you never know when they're gonna be.
Yeah.
If you could find out what the schedule for that field is gonna be.
Posted on our website?
Posted on the website. You just wanna pick up a game.
I was just thinking, oh, yeah. It's fun to watch.
Yeah. It would be nice if they could somehow schedule it on days of the concerts as well.
Yeah.
Just so that you got, well.
I think you're barking.
Yeah, do we wanna confuse the parking?
I think the season will be over, cause the s- the concerts this year, I think July tenth or first one.
Yeah, yeah.
At that point, it's travel.
That schools out.
That would be uh, what do you call it? It's all stars. It would be all stars and that, they're not gonna practice there.
Do these guys do fall ball too, or that doesn't happen?
I'm not sure on that. I can find out.
That'd be great.
Used to have, used to have a game. I think they may still do it, uh Wellington Day. Have a game.
Or at least a scrimmage or something.
After the opening ceremony, whenever they go and start a game. I don't know if they still do it or not.
I mean, I can, I can float that to the the coaches that I know and even if it's not official, it's.
Right, just get the kids out there to hit and have fun. It's a great idea.
It's a practice because there might be some Wellington families there whose kids are playing. Even if they don't have a game scheduling, they get, they get together and practice.
Hey guys, can I make a comment?
No.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so just two things, cause I've been listening. Um number one, um you know, we should think twice about asking for a percentage of any of the profits from any organization that runs the snack bar, only because they're doing us a service. And um the ten percent, it won't me add up to that much, but it it'll mean a lot to them. I mean, it's just my thought. You guys do whatever. And um and then circling around back to the scoreboard, am I correct that you're gonna try and get the same scoreboard that we have at River Road up over at center, uh up at um Hall School?
Town office building.
I mean, town office building, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Okay, great. Cause I think it'd be good to have them both the same so that people can, you know, you know how to operate one, you can operate the other. That's all.
We may be also be able to, if one controller breaks down and.
Oh, yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
Games, we might be able to use the same controller.
Yeah, okay, that's great. I just wanted to comment on that. I just, I think it's important to have um a snack bar and um you know, whoever comes, again, they're doing us a big favor. Um so, but you know, whatever everyone decides is, I'm fine with it, okay?
To take was electricity. You're gonna have to open and close it. You know, we have to get a little involved.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna see that Wellington children's mothers will probably be pitching into volunteer as well, so it's it's definitely a group, a group effort.
Yeah, okay.
Nothing and just asking for money. I mean, we're we're part of that program now, so.
Alright, that's fine. Like, again, I just, I'll I'll go along with whatever, you know, the group decides. That's fine. Alright, thank you. Otherwise, great job, Jim.
As usual, Jim.
Um I'll I'll check in with, I'll I'll check in with people and, you know, we don't have to decide now, but I'll get some feedback and and see what other towns are doing, see what other fields are doing.
I just think getting that. It wouldn't, that building up to speed, just getting, you gotta get the refrigerators cleaned out, plugged in.
Just getting it open and aired out, very ugly, isn't that a bad idea?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, pretty soon. We should be down to turn the water on too. I'm sure it's, if it works. We wait, we wait a couple of weeks.
So you seem to think that water works.
What'd you say the first game was?
Uh games, two to three weeks. Practices are starting now, but the first game in a couple of weeks.
You don't really need water to air, do they?
Yeah, three inches this past weekend and uh, they used to like to spray off the infield, just not the infield, the dirt in the infield. Just to get it, you know, so it's not dusty.
We have handholds down at the.
Right where the ble- under the bleachers, believe it or not.
It does work.
It's connected. Ah, I think it's all gotta be blown out. I I can't, I don't know the last time any of it was used. So you probably have to blow it out, make sure it works. I think you and I are probably the last guys that did that.
We wanna, we wanna make sure that if we, we look it up, that it's not blowing water into the dirt.
Right.
Running the pump constantly.
So.
If there's a split.
I, there's, there's like a silcock right at the shed and then there's a silcock at each manhole. See, a handles. You gotta go to each handle, open all the silcocks, get all the air out. It's a little bit of work.
I don't know the last time that thing was ever run all the way out there.
It was you and me, probably, a million years ago. I remember tearing it down one winter, blowing it all out with the chop bag.
Well, there's no water in the concession stand, right?
Not potable water. There is a hose bib out back, but it's just to wash dishes. Can't drink it.
It's not potable.
You can drink it if you want. I'm not gonna say anything, but we can't pour water into a pitcher and give it to somebody.
I still think we need to do that at some point.
I agree. I agree.
I'll be quiet.
It's just a bunch of testing, periodic testing. That's all that's required.
Yeah, we'd have to put in our budget.
Has to be tested, so every, a public water supply has gotta be tested every so often for probably more so, I mean, more lead, more gasoline, all the things that you wouldn't normally do for your house. It was a little more expensive, but I don't know how much.
Should we pick on that or should we lay low?
I I can, I can look into it. I'll s- I'll shoot an email out.
Carl talked about it. He said the parts, it's, the parts per million is now parts per billion. It's it's a ridiculous number for a.
It's gotta be super clean and we don't wanna end up having to put a filter system on, that's all.
Well, but ain't right. We're not gonna offer it as drinking water, you know, but we should know, we should know what the rules are. I I'm thinking, you know.
The health department downstairs may be able to tell you what's required for that.
Eastern Highlands tests the pond in the summer, so.
Jody, I'm guessing.
I don't know.
You know, you know what I was thinking, guys? What if um, what if we found out what it takes to make it potable? And then reach out to area water companies. You got Banner Water and Aqua Filter, Aqua Pump. And then, and then said, look, we're looking for um, you know, come, someone to come in and um, you know, make the changes that are needed to make it potable and then we'll advertise, you know, that this water is brought fresh to you by Aqua Pump or Banner who, or who, whatever water company comes in, maybe we get someone who comes in and does it for us. Well, the idea being, we get someone to come in and does it basically in exchange for the free advertising and as a community service. Just, just a thought, you know, I throw out there.
That hurts to ask, yeah.
So, but I guess we need to find out what it need, what needs to be done and what is the expected cost. Cause if it's on, if it's a thousand bucks or one or two grand, someone might be willing to do that, you know? I mean, Aqua Pump advertises on TV. I mean, it's not like they can't swing it, but we could at least find out.
Yeah.
So uh if we find out, I'd be willing to reach out to those guys and and just see, okay?
Would I dare?
Alright, that's that. Thank you.
Sounds good to me.
I think you could probably go online and see what the state charges, period.
Yeah.
Take a peek. And it's periodic. They probably come every quarter and do it.
I don't know if it's that often, but I would say probably at least six months, I guess.
They might do your water testing too.
Well, we're having our water tested next. We're having Banner Water come do our, they come to our service hours, softener every year. And um we um, they're they're testing our water. This, they they wait several weeks after you, they've done your um system, but they're they're gonna test it for us. I don't know if that's the same kind of testing that we need down there. I assume it is, but I don't know.
It's similar, but it's a little more complex than.
Okay, alright. Yeah, alright, I get it.
They'll send it out. They'll send it out.
Testing for hydrocarbons at your house, gasoline, oil spills, things like that nature, especially near the highway. But they're gonna do, they're gonna do it at the park. They're gonna test for things, they, lead, they're gonna test for things you wouldn't normally test for in a house.
Okay. Alright, alright, well, we'll find out as time goes on. Alright, great. Alright, I have nothing else. Thank you, guys.
Alrighty, any, anybody got any more comments?
Good job, Jimmy.
No new business. And director's report was fantastic. That April camp sounds great.
I love, I love doing the camps just cause I get to shoot hoops with the kids.
Yeah, it's great. It's great that they've got buses available. It'll make it easier on the parents. I think it's good. So if there's nothing else, we could adjourn. Anyone wanna make a motion? Stu?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second? I'll second.
I will second. Alright, good.
Good meeting, guys. Thank you, everybody, for chipping in and showing up. Made life good.
Thanks, everybody.
Sorry, I was late. Have a good day. Bye bye.